Time being 6:30, we'll call the meeting of November 23 to order. Tonight, starting off, we have a presentation from Mr. Wells and some of our teachers on AP courses in VHS classroom. Would you like to come up, please, and start your presentation? I'll turn the floor over to you. Just ask that you speak into the microphone so the people at home, when they do hear this tape, they'll hear well.
And to start off this evening, what I would like to do is to take this opportunity. If you look into the packet that is provided for you this evening, if you'll flip to the VHS packet, please. At Oxford High School, we're very fortunate to have your support in offering virtual high school. Each high school that's a part of VHS has a site coordinator, and this evening, we're very happy to welcome and to show my personal appreciation for all of her hard work, Ms. Annie Dubois, who is Oxford High School's site coordinator. And Ms. Dubois is going to kind of walk you through the logistics of where we are, what we've done. Although, just a side note, we do have a class that we offer, and Ms. Gallant does an outstanding job in teaching that class. She has a creative writing class. If you look in your packet, she has students from all over New England, I believe, Pennsylvania, Hawaii, and Korea. So it's a kind of a diversified group of students that she's teaching via the Internet. And Ms. Dubois will go into more detail as to the offerings that we currently have and what we have for students that are enrolled in which courses. So without further ado, Ms. Dubois.
Thank you. I'm going to go over there and... As Mr. Wells was saying, we are in our second year of being involved with Virtual High School, and the company located in Maynard, Massachusetts.
Chair, can you hold a minute?
Yep, I'm going to hold you. We're going to figure a way to get you to mic.
Right, on the last presentation, it did not transmit well. We either need to put a mic on a table or a chair so the viewing audience can hear it at home of some sort, please. This is very important that they do see it when they read.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I hold it?
Just like Bob Barker, go for it.
You can't go too far.
And I'm good.
That's fine.
There's lots.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Do you want me to start again?
You can go.
Please.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, as I was saying, we've been involved with Virtual High School for two years, and it's usually known as VHS, that's how we refer to it, is a little company located in Maynard, Massachusetts. And they... The idea behind our joining Virtual High School was to expand the scope of our offerings. There, as you will see, a multitude of courses that are innovative, that are very high-quality, advanced placement, and honors courses that we don't have a way to offer here at Oxford High School. So that's how we came about to look into VHS, or that's one of the reasons why we did. This is a quote, actually, directly from their site, and this is a description of what it is that they do, in their own words, "Over 200 full semester courses in most of the main subject areas, disciplines, and besides that, also a fair quantity of advanced placement, four-year courses, and that are in some, what they call pre-advanced placement semester courses, which would be addressed to maybe sophomores before they go into an advanced placement course in their junior year." And, you know, they, of course, they are certified to do that. And so the arrangement that we have with them is, in exchange for releasing one teacher for one period a day to teach a virtual high school class, we get 25 seats for our students. And they can choose, within reason, just about anything from the catalog, within reason, meaning some courses are limited to certain grade levels, and they have to be in that grade level in order to take the class. This is the course that Mr. Wells was talking about. This is what Mrs. Gallant does. She's the one that we release to teach a class in order to participate in Virtual High School. She teaches a creative writing class. I guess my links are not going to work to actually take you there, but if this were to work, this takes you to a description of... Course description is a creative writing, English class, and this is the grade level, so she gets only juniors and seniors in there theoretically, although if you see down here, she actually has a sophomore this year. So there's some flexibility, depending on the ability of the student and the particular situation. This is a story of her enrollment. She started out in the fall of 2008, and you'll see, we did also at Oxford High School start out very strong, as opposed to the predictions, which had been, when we were trained, that we probably would start with five or six and go on up from there. We sort of seemed to have done the opposite and started... She started with 22, had 24 in the spring. She has 17 this fall, and I'm enrolling students right now into the spring semester VHS courses, and to date, we have 13 in her class. And also, as you heard earlier, her students here are from everywhere, which is interesting for her, but if you think that our students are also in the same situation, and they're in classes with students from all over the world, and that's very exciting for them, all of the nation, anyway, if not the world. And we talked about earlier on, the site coordinator, that would be me, the one that does the administrative support for VHS. I advise the students about choice of classes. I monitor their grades. I monitor their work. I'm the liaison with the faculty, so they write to me if there's an issue or if something has to be approved before a student can continue working. They run things by me and often spend time with some students who have difficulty, although some of the courses they're taking, quite frankly, they're way beyond my expertise. So this is the story of our enrollment here at Oxford High School, sorry. This is what's going on right now. Maybe I'll start from the bottom here. In the fall of 2008, we did a pre-student survey before enrolling students, and that was a recommendation that was made by Virtual High School, so that we selected only the students who were going to be perfect. That is, that were self-directed, that were highly motivated, and so we had a strong, strong first year, first term. And in the second term, we let some kids in who hadn't taken the survey, and that worked very well. And this year, we reserved it only for seniors. We found that we have many seniors who get too many academic labs, and so this was made available to them in priority, and they certainly took advantage of it. Unfortunately, I didn't fill up. I did initially, and then they dropped out, and by then, the students who had an interest had gotten involved in something else. And so this is what's happening at this point. These are the grades that the students have been getting, again, for 2008. That was by applying the criteria of the survey. So as you see, you know, we had a really strong finish here, 92 average grade for the classes, quite exceptional. And in the spring, we had an 88, which is also excellent. And to date, we... Now that we're really open to everyone, we're no longer basing our selection on the survey, but rather on a first-come, first-served basis, we're seeing, you know, a strong B, which is probably more realistic than this. And there was question at one time as to whether or not we should be opening the classes to students who were not, you know, self-directed, highly motivated, et cetera. And we decided to, and I think that was quite a good idea, because they're doing quite well. And these are some of the courses that they're taking. I can't... I have to move away from that. You can see, this was the fall 2009, so this is right now, what our kids are involved in. And just by looking down this list, you see the incredible variety of the offerings. Sometimes, they use VHS to take something that they could actually take here, but it frees them up to take something else that they want to take that is maybe offered at the same period. But more often than not, they take advantage of taking something that we don't offer. So this is what they're doing right now, and this is what kids have signed up for for the spring so far. And you have that in your packet. I made copies of those sheets. I thought you might find them interesting. So it goes from the golden age of classical Greece to web design, with everything in between. So... And that's it. That's my piece.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Peterson?
I have a few questions, if you don't mind, Ms. Dubois. You're the administrator of this. You don't teach yourself?
No, well, I...
You only release...
Not that class.
Not any of the Virtual High School classes. Only Ms. Gallant is the one released at this point?
She doesn't teach our...
And who determined that and why? Is it going to be a rotating thing? Is it only going to be English offered by our staff? Will it change at any point in time?
We had to have... We had to have one teacher chosen and trained, and she was the one who volunteered... Oh, thank you. She was the one who volunteered to be trained and to teach a VHS class, and so she was the one that was chosen. There was never a question of my teaching a VHS class. I actually volunteered to coordinate and do the, you know, do the student liaison. None of our students is allowed to take Ms. Gallant's class.
Okay.
It was...
No, I'm not questioning your motivation, who was chosen. I just wanted to know how and why. And you monitor us, but who monitors you or the school system? How's that handled through VHS? We have a contract with them, but is there an overseer from VHS to us?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay. And these AP courses were supposed... Well, my understanding, or maybe I'm misled, were to be honors in college. Are these courses, you just said, open to everybody? See, one that has an IEP, how are they determined to get into this?
Well, I think that...
Aren't these supposed to be honors, additional courses?
Some students have IEPs who are quite...
Then, to my understanding of AP, it wouldn't be considered AP. These would just be Virtual High School courses, then?
It depends on the course. Ms. Gallant's class is not an AP course. It's an honors class.
This is an honors class.
Right. And if a student has some limitations...
That's what I'm getting at. These are honors in college courses, then, and not just general...
I'm going to inter... Do you want... That's okay. I know what you're going for. One clarification of these, are they all honors and APs? They are not. These are just classes.
Right. And that was the whole... That was... Can I...
Yep.
Through the chair. I was the one that brought this to the committee in the first place, and I was interested in it because we did not have the AP courses that we wanted. But the beauty of this program was it didn't just give us AP courses. It opened up a world of courses available to our students, all students.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
Yeah, and that's how it was presented. I mean, we have the ability to offer our AP students additional AP courses through VHS, but we... And on the second part of that is, we also have the ability to offer courses that we do not have here for the entire population. I viewed it as something that could be utilized by every student at some point. Now, it's a costly program, so it's really up to the administrators who participates in the program. But at the same time, you really have an opportunity, as a student at Oxford High School, to get a worldly education through this program, and that was the intent of it.
If I may add, there's some prerequisites to certain courses. You have to have completed a certain level chemistry in order to get to the next level chemistry, that kind of thing, and the limitation also, the grade level. But I think beyond that, it's just really based on whether the student is able to, you know, willing to do the work and keep up with it. It's very structured, so that would be a help for students who are, maybe need some guidance, because it's a very structured week. It goes week by week, so that by the end of the day on Tuesday, that week is complete. And so it gives... It enables the students to move along and to stay on track, or it helps them, if I may.
Anything else, Ms. Peterson?
No, that answers my question. It's fine that that expands the scope of our curriculum here, as long as it's then, I guess, overseen, because these aren't left... These students aren't left to work on their own. In other words, there's someone in the classroom, et cetera, with them.
Right.
So if it's a general course or an AP course, there is someone there.
Right. They also can work from home, that they can access their work just from home, just as well.
Anyone else? I want to thank you, because I also... I know when Mr. Spitz had brought this, I think that it's wonderful, and I think for the children who are going on to college, a lot of times, a college will require an online course. This kind of gives them a feel for it before they get there, to see what this actually entails and how much I have to put into it. So I think it's a win-win, and it's a win for everybody, and if we can do all of our children, that's great. So thank you very much for that presentation on the VHS. Mr. Wells?
Advanced placement. If you would, please first turn your attention to the school profile, something certainly that's very important, that as taxpayers, people are... It's available to everyone in town, so that you can't see exactly what's going on at Oxford High School. You'll notice that under curriculum weight for rank in the lower left-hand corner, as you look at... We have four advanced placement courses currently. What this provides is an opportunity for students at Oxford High School to compete, and compete when you apply at colleges and universities throughout the country. So by having the opportunity to have currently four AP classes, it's a great opportunity for our student body. I met probably six weeks ago with the advanced placement teachers, and we took a look at our scores. I asked them to do an assessment on the scores, find out what their thoughts were on the strengths and weaknesses of the curriculum, as well as their scores, and, you know, any justifications for good, bad, and indifferent. One of the things, as I personally took a look at this year for the first time, this being my second year on board, one of the safety nets that a lot of schools have in place, we have not had in place in the last couple of years, and that is a contract. What I'm planning on doing is, in the spring, have an advanced placement seminar, where the teachers are present, all students that are signing up for the advanced placement courses, as well as their parents, have... It's a mandatory meeting, so that all parents and all students are aware of exactly what is required of them, most especially over the summer. And the reason I tell you this is because, as we have 10, 12, 14, or whatever, students sign up for a course, oftentimes, they don't complete the summer reading or the summer work that's necessary to begin the course in the fall. So now they come back to school after having a relaxing summer, and they decide that they just want to drop the course. What I would like to do, and what I'm proposing, is that we have a contract, so that the parents would sign, they would understand exactly what is required of their son or daughter, the student would sign, and consequently, they wouldn't drop the course, and our enrollment would remain stable based on the numbers that signed up for it in the fall. There is rigor with the courses. It is difficult. It's at a different level, and it's important that people stay the course, if you will. And that's one of the things that we've had a little bit of difficulty with. If you look at the white sheet, there's a packet that has AP exam scores on it. If you look on the backside of that very first page, there's two pages to every one. So you have a breakdown of the global scores throughout the entire world of the AP courses that we offer, and then you also have a statistics page at the top. It says, "Percent of students earning scores of three or better on the 2009 AP exams have the capability of applying for college credit." And that is a score on a base... On a scale of one to five, a three or better, they can apply for the university or the college that they're attending to receive credit in advance. We used to call it CLAP. You'd CLAP out of the course by taking it here in high school. If you look at the percentages, for example, calculus, 66.6 percent, that's the percentage of the Oxford High School students that received a three or better. The 59.4 percent is what the statistic is for the global, the entire globe. And then, as you work your way down to biology, United States history, English Lit and Compre, you see the statistics all the way down and through. What I would like to do is to... Each individual, color-coded, I'd like to thank Mary Jane Rastakot. We have color-coded each and every one of our four courses for your viewing purview. And included in there is a course description of the course itself, the syllabus that was sent directly to the College Board, different types of assessments that are used, as well as the required texts. So there's a complete overview of each individual course, much more so than I believe of any information that you have on other courses that we currently have. I'm fortunate, this evening, to have two of our AP teachers that were able to make it. To my right, Mr. Radzik, who teaches biology, and to my left, Mr. Tim Craig. Tim teaches the AP Calc, and what I'd like to do is just have them give an overview or bring to life the packets that you have before you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Okay. My first question would be why I received the pink cover, but beyond that, this is only my second year, actually, teaching AP calculus in any prior employment or elsewhere. So Mr. Grenier had actually come to me in 2007, requesting that I put the course together, so I had no... Had nothing to base it on. However, I was allowed to go to a workshop, as well as the AP Institute in Vermont. Very, very helpful. And from there, I was able to put the course together. You are looking at the College Board-approved syllabus. There were minor changes for this year, which would not affect the approval status. The initial syllabus was approved. But again, I, having not taught it before, I was going really on the basis of a lot of research at that point, so I've only tweaked it a little bit for the 2009, 2010 school year. And thus far, I only have one year of scores to go by, but I really think that the course has started off very successful. You know, in referencing what Mr. Wells had said about the contract, I tend to agree with him. Initially, for the 2008, 2009 school year, 17 students signed up for the course. But again, coming into the school year, they did not complete some much-needed summer work, kind of basically continuing with some pre-calculus topics I knew they would need. They didn't have it done, and a lot of kids dropped out, and eventually, got down to nine. However, it was a very strong nine students. The kids were excited to be in the class. Believe it or not, we had a lot of fun. I know that's odd for calculus, but it really is a great math. And I told the kids this, and they realized that a lot of their mathematics prior to calculus have been kind of fragmented. Ah, they learned some algebra over here, they learned some geometry, and then pre-calculus was a lot of analytic function behavior type of work. And calculus, they realized, brought all of the mathematics together, and they really enjoyed that. So I think they... I think the students benefited greatly from the course. I don't have knowledge about every student. I know that three students went on to WPI. Two of them tested into Calculus III there. WPI requires a math placement test, so two of them tested into Calc III. This is really only designed to be a Calc I course, so I don't... I'm not sure how we hit that, but I guess we did enough. And one student went to Stone Hill. I'm not sure what he's majoring in. One student went to a military... Was it Military Academy?
Come on, yep.
Yes. And I believe she's having success down there in her calculus courses as well. So again, I think that having only one year, it started off strong. This year, we have 14 students, and I told the kids straight out, I gave them the scores, not specific names with scores, but I told them, "Students scored fours and fives. It's possible. It's, you know, I can lead you there. You just got to... You got to get on board." And I think students are doing that. So I predict... Hope... Well, I don't want to predict. I hope for similar success.
That's great. Mr. Grub, before I ask that, can you tell me about... I know I can see the numbers as far as passing. On an average, what do the students obtain as far as a grade point average in your class? Are they all high achievers, too, from your... See what they get?
Yes. Last year, in that class, I had the number one, two, three ranked students in...
Were getting good marks, As and Bs, in the AP class itself, from you?
Oh, okay. You're looking for their grading? Oh, yes. I don't have their grades in front of me.
Yeah, but they were all strong students, for you, for your...
They were. The individual that wasn't quite as successful did pass, but not with a very strong score.
Mr. Spitz?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you. Okay? I listen to a lot of teachers and a lot of input on AP. I think most of us are big proponents, and I think we've all really tried to get additional AP courses into the high school. Your marks show me, I mean, you're at a 66 percent, the nation's at a 59.4, of achieving the three or better on the AP exams. That says to me that you're being very successful at what you're doing. So I really just wanted to chime in to say thank you, because to me, this is exceptionally important work. We spend a lot of time on mid-range students, and we focus on the majority of our students most times in most things that we decide to do. That's why I think AP is something that we need more of, because a lot of times, our best students get the least amount of attention from us. And I think teachers like you are giving that attention to the students that deserve it, and hopefully, can move them to WPI and can move them to the Military Academy with honors. Nothing would make me prouder than for Oxford to achieve those things through our school department. So I want to thank you personally for that.
Well, thank you.
No concern. Mrs. Koonin?
Having been a mom of one of those students that actually did have fun in AP Calc, I think that...
Go figure.
I know. I still don't understand what she's talking about. You know, I think that I, too, have been a proponent of AP courses, and I think that that's really where we have to go. But we also have to get those grades, so that they're true benefits to our students. And so I totally agree with Mr. Spitz on that, and you seem to have really nailed it. Kate is loving it. I mean, she's in Calc II now, and she has upperclassmen coming to her to ask her questions. So she's definitely in her glory, and has told me more than once that it's Mr. Craig that really put me on this direction, so I do thank you.
Thank you again. And just to expand on that quickly, you know, sometimes, it's not even the... Bless you. The... That's a reaction. You didn't sneeze, I say that, too. Sometimes, it's not even the students ranked very high in their class. I know I had an individual last year, I'm hesitant to say a name, although he was successful, but I was his only AP course. He was a football player. He was a successful athlete, and it was a little bit of a shock for Mom and Dad that he was taking AP Calc. And so I guess, and to go along with that, a student this year who wasn't, you know, really, again, at the top of her class, and didn't even know she enjoyed mathematics, and she's taking AP Calc and is really enjoying it. So I think we're benefiting a lot of students who maybe didn't even know they enjoyed mathematics at the same time.
You're reaching across the board, and that's great.
Trying to. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. Radzik.
Evening. I teach the AP Biology. I also teach college prep biology and honors biology. With the AP... What the AP Central would like is a challenging college-level course. On a mid-range, they want students to be challenged. And the AP Biology is a little different because they want labs as well. The whole structure of the course is built around twelve essential labs that require you to take. You can access that information on Prentice Hall's website. They have run-throughs of the labs and virtual simulations. Give you a feel for it if you'd like to check that out. In addition, they'd like you to cover most of the thousand-page textbook. My opinion, it's a huge amount of information, and you have to process it. As was mentioned earlier, in the previous two years, most of these students simply do not do the summer reading. So, they're a little behind when they get here. All the AP courses are good choices. If a student in Oxford was to take all four courses that are offered, that would represent roughly what you would be doing in a college setting in your first semester. In a college, you'd have fifteen weeks to accomplish all that material. In high school, you have something like forty weeks to get through the material. So, it gives you an idea of how much material is covered and how much they have to compress it when they actually get into college. So, the AP Board would like to see both breadth of coverage and depth of coverage, of coverage. So, it is surprising to some of them how much work they're expected to do.
Hmm.
And roughly, they cover the last two centuries of biology, up to and including the modern developments in DNA, which, in my opinion, could be a standalone course, but it's just merely one section in the entire course.
Any questions, concerns on the board? Mr. Peterson?
I like the cover letter that goes out to the parents, Mr. Wells and both of the teachers. This has been a struggle for me because this goes way back to when my daughters were at this high school, and we had to start cutting out AP courses. And both of them lost a very critical AP course their senior years and had to test out their freshman year in college, as you alluded to. So, I'm really glad to see these coming along because the higher-end students can tend to be bored, and you can also lose them at the same point in time. And they're not challenged enough, which I really like these. And one thing I will say, part of the conference, I just came back from the Cape from four days, Math Association of School Committees, and part of the conference and next year's conference will be dedicated to the AP level. And I think they recognize that in all school systems, and there will be other information and other things coming out to help you at our level, at the high school levels, to try to transition from the high school to the collegiate level. I don't have those materials now, but I'll pass them along to you as soon as I get them. So, I think because of the economy for the last twenty years, I think school systems have recognized it, and there's a cry for it. So, it looks like there'll be some more help, and we're looking for legislation to also put forward to try to get monies put into this type of virtual high school, AP courses, whatever, at this point in time, because everybody's cut back so far that we're running, and I don't want to offend anybody, but we're spending millions of dollars on special ed, but not all the rest of our students in our systems. And I think you'll see some of that try to swing in the next few years. So, congratulations. Keep up the good work. I'm glad to see it here at Oxford. All right?
When looking at AP history, Mr. Tommy Thier, and our English literature, as well as the two courses that these gentlemen teach, something that I'd like to point out with the AP English literature is that we have a junior course, which is a pre-AP course. Idealistically, to be able to offer that in each AP course, that would be an ideal situation. But when you look at the, when you look at our budget throughout all the comprehensive and public high schools and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the reductions that we've had to face year after year after year, it becomes very difficult when you have a high school of five hundred and thirty, five hundred and twenty students, and the number of student, the student-teacher ratio continues to be in a state of flux. So, you'd have a class with twenty-eight to thirty-two, and then on the flip side, maybe a pre-AP class that you sacrifice with twelve students, comparatively speaking, to an AP class where they could potentially receive credit with twelve students. It's difficult to be able to offer everything. I will tell you that I am looking into the potentiality and the possibility of being able to do that. The AP Institute was mentioned earlier by Mr. Craig. Just a point of information, as a district, we would pay teachers to, we have to pay for them to go to a one-week seminar. They also have refresher courses. So, should we expand or change any teachers, we would have to make sure that we provided funding or made funding available to send them to the seminar for that entire week. And then, I believe, it's a two-day seminar, which is a brush-up course that they provide through the College Review Board. But the four courses that we offer here certainly help our students. They put us in a pretty good position to be competitive. Again, one of the frustrating things that I believe that everyone has is the difference between the want and the will, because you have students that want to be really good students. They want to have a very demanding academic, rigorous schedule, but are they willing to do what it takes? So, hopefully, by instituting an AP seminar in the spring, a one-night glimpse or snapshot, and bringing the parents in, setting up a contract, we'll be able to provide a situation where the students will know, the parents will know going into it, and we will keep a little bit of stability in terms of the numbers of students that sign up that remain in the course.
Mr. Wells, can you, especially when we're looking, probably, as we look at these numbers, especially Biology and U.S. History, what kind of self-exam do you do here at the high school watching those numbers? Because we are very low on those. So, is it, I mean, obviously, we want to keep those courses, but as a cost-effective, because you just said numbers, so now do the numbers start dwindling? So, we just have a few students in there, and they're possibly, they're not, they're not making the grade here.
Right. Certainly, you know, one of the things, and again, I've met with the AP teachers twice this year. The first time, we did have an open discussion about taking a look at your scores, doing a self-assessment to determine, you know, is there something that we can provide administratively from the school committee that we're not providing to assist you in developing more rigor in your course? That was question number one. And, you know, from my perspective, what I have to do is take a look at the scores and find out if there's something else that might be missing. And if change is necessary, then certainly change would have to take place.
Do you think it has anything to do with, and I'm just grasping that, I mean, obviously, as far as an MCAS, we've all done English, math, English, math, English, math, and we're so, trying to be so strong in those that we may take away from our science and our history, and therefore, now we pump them in, the AP, and it might be a little tougher? We don't have maybe the back, you know, knowledge of that?
I think the science and the history certainly is limited, comparatively speaking, coming up to the high school.
Right.
In terms of offerings. And that's something that I believe is out of the control.
Right.
The elementary and middle schools, in terms of the rigor that English and math has gotten and will continue to get. So, that certainly has an impact. If you look at that, again, the statistical sheet that I have, or that you have on individuals, I think one of the things that you will find is that when you look on the back page where it says the scores are three or better, when you look at calculus and you look at English Lit, Oxford High School's scores are pretty good. But if you look at the ALL, which is, again, the global score, and you compare that global score to that of Biology and U.S. History, that reflects exactly what you're saying, except globally, that the percentage is a little bit lower for those two courses globally than certainly Math and English. And that's, that's across the globe.
Mr. Spitz?
To go along with that statement, it is lower, but not as substantially lower as we are.
Agreed.
So, so I do appreciate that and do recognize that, but at the same time, you know, I think we are driven towards MCAS, and we all, we have been for many years now. But at the same time, I don't know if that really shows the same changes between the national level and the actual scoring that we have.
Right.
So, we need to examine that, because I certainly think that with the economy the way it is, the budgets the way they are, if we are putting money into AP, which I certainly hope we will be and continue to do, that we're spending our money correctly. That is always a concern for me, and that this money is utilized to the best of our ability. And looking at those two groups of scoring, I don't really think we're doing that yet. So, I personally would like to see you come back in three or four months to the committee and let us know what your plans are to, to change those scores, those AP scores, working with your, your staff, so that we can get an idea that this is part of something that we want to continue with. I personally believe in it. I personally think it's the right choice for us as a school department. But at the same time, we have to be able to substantiate it, and right now, I'm not quite seeing that, in those two.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Mr. Peterson?
But, Mr. Spitz, this is what happened in the late eighties and early nineties, and that's what I alluded to, my own family situation back then, and they had to test out to get into certain areas of their chosen colleges or universities. Both my daughters were bright students, but I'll use anatomy and physiology as an example. We got into this where we were down to four students, numbers showed the same percentages. So, for cost-effectiveness, this is the way their direction Oxford went. They dropped Russian, they dropped anatomy and physiology as an example. So, in a school this size, or in most schools this size throughout the nation or the state, you're only going to have two to twelve or fifteen students per year that are going to take that, because that's the direction and the courses that they need to get where they need to go for collegiate level or wherever else. So, I hate, I don't want to see us revert backwards, and I agree with you, the numbers aren't quite right now, but I still want to see that money put into it, because...
Oh, me too.
Even if it's only half a dozen students, those particular students need these curriculum to get where they're going the final years. And if they aren't there, there's, if that's part of the science or part of the math program, if you start with algebra or whatever and try to work your way up to calculus, and calculus isn't there, it's one part of the math puzzle that's missing for me to go where I need to go after Oxford High School.
Mrs. Twilson.
And Mr. Spitz?
Just to, just to add on to what you're saying, I totally agree with you, Mr. Peterson. I'm not in any way, shape, or form insinuating that we shouldn't have AP courses. But I just think that we still need to take as much action or direction as we can...
Absolutely.
...to make sure that we're doing the right things within these, these disciplines, to make sure that we're, we've got the right people in place, you know, the right, the right students are enrolled in these. And I love your idea, Mr. Wells, about a contract. I think that's a great thing to do, to get the commitment from the parents as well as the student. Normally, when you get that kind of buy-in, it becomes a real buy-in. And I think that, that most of the parents in Oxford would, would stand behind that contract and make sure that their, their child really does what's necessary to succeed in those programs. So, I think you should go ahead with that personally. I think that's a great idea. And I think it will commit these students to these programs, which is going to help those numbers too, right off the bat. But at the same time, I think we also need to look at the logistics and how we're treating each one of these disciplines. And that's, that's my biggest concern in this, is more what we're doing. So, okay. Thank you.
Well, I think, I really think we're all in agreement that we obviously care very deeply and want the APs on the books, but I think we also have to be very mindful of, to have these courses, and if no one passes them, are we spending our money in the right way? And have we done everything we possibly can to make sure that they are successful? And I think that's what you all are saying to, to us tonight. So, we appreciate that, and, and obviously, we can have you come back toward the end of the year and let us know, maybe some thoughts that you've kind of banged around and thought of another way, because we certainly don't want to put on the books all the AP courses and make, not make, but have the children fail, because that's, that's not really what we're about either, because that sends a good message to them about, you know, were they able to take this or not. So, I think we can look for some good things maybe later on. Anything else? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I am going to change and have our student representative, Nikki, give us her presentation tonight, so we can get her out, so she can do her homework.
I have a big math project due tomorrow. Okay. Today, we finished our turkey run, which was very successful. We had forty-six baskets in all, which beats the last year. We had forty-two, so we've already surpassed our goal. Coming up, we have, for the student council, we have our Coffee House, which is Wednesday, December 2nd, from six to eight. We set up actually in here, in the community room, and set it up like a poetry bar sort of thing, area, like we set up a stage and mood lighting, I guess I should say, like dim lighting, and we have little tables and refreshments and everything available, and it's, it's a really great time. It's like a miniature talent show in less, what's the word I want to use? Less big, more little. And on December 3rd, we have our eighth-grade transition night slash open house, where eighth graders and their parents can come, and where the student council is working with them and giving them a tour of the school. And I believe Mr. Wells is holding presentations for the parents, for them to be aware of what's coming in the future year for their students to enter high school. And in the cafeteria, we're setting up booths for exhibits for the clubs to kind of explain what their club is all about and have the eighth graders start to think about what clubs they want to join once they come up here. For sports, tomorrow is Extreme Orange and Black Day to show our pride for our football team and get ready for pep rally, which is tomorrow, last period during the day. And it continues to Wednesday, which is our first bonfire from six to nine, which is here. And there's going to be a lot of games, food, and it's just going to be a good time. And on Thursday is our Thanksgiving Day game. It's at Auburn at ten o'clock, I believe the time is. So, everyone should be there. Root them on. And tomorrow, Oxford's casual dining is giving sixty percent of their profits and donating it to the senior class towards their needs of money. And that's it.
Terrific. Any questions for, oh, yes, Mr. Spitz?
I just want to tag on to that a little bit. This is one thing that Oxford's has done for the school department, actually for each individual class, and it started when I was the president of the Booster Club. They are a fantastic, fantastic part of Oxford. They really are. And each year that they do this, and the reason I'm doing this, because I really want to hype it up a little bit so that people show up there tomorrow night.
When I'm live.
Huh?
I don't think we're live tonight.
Well, they'll show tomorrow night.
That's right.
Maybe they'll be able to get dinner there tomorrow night.
Run.
But the thing is, is they, they do share, sixty percent of the profits go to the class that, that they're representing for that particular night to help with their fundraising efforts. And I just, I just want to say kudos to Oxford's for doing that, and just to make people aware that you really should participate, because it really does happen every year. So, thank you.
And to add on to that, P&amp;D does the same thing at a different date. You bring in a slip and whatever, you get a certain amount of that goes to the senior class too, so.
Great.
Very lucky, a lot of our community supports us here.
Definitely.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Nikki. We appreciate it. Oh, Mr. Wells, you want to get on the bandwagon?
I just wanted to, I don't want to minimize, and I do want to maximize to the community of Oxford, the turkey run that took place, the second annual, led by the student council under the direction of Patty Spitz. The teachers, the clubs, the organizations did an amazing job. They decorated boxes. For those of you that are watching live in Oxford, I would encourage you at ten o'clock tonight to watch WCTR TV, Channel Three, out of Worcester. I know they interviewed Nicole, they interviewed the superintendent, they were here. And it's the season of giving, and I couldn't be more proud of the Oxford Public Schools, Oxford High School, for what they did in forty-four complete meals, from stuffing to pies, to turkeys, to milk, to coffee. It's an amazing event, and it certainly is the epitome of what giving back and giving is all about. So, I'd like to thank everyone that participated, from the central office all the way up to everyone here, the Oxford Police Department, the Highway Department was here.
Two truckloads.
Two truckloads. We, we had the line going, moving everything out into the truck, and it was just a great afternoon. And hopefully, the families in Oxford will enjoy Thanksgiving, when maybe they wouldn't have to the same degree. So, thank you to everyone.
That was wonderful. Mr. Spitz?
Just to tag on to that a little bit, I heard a rumor, and this is strictly a rumor, that the school committee won today's event. I don't know.
If they did, I certainly give kudos to them. I will check the legitimacy of that, to make sure it was all on the up and up. There was a little bit of fun last year, and, but I do know that the school committee, I don't want to say that there were five, but I thought I counted five baskets.
Well, that's due in part mainly to Mr. Himmelberger, and he did a great job with collections and stuff, so thank you for that.
But the school committee was railroaded by the superintendent last year. He's the one that won, so.
It's the exact opposite this year.
It's the exact opposite this year. We're going to get him.
That's why I picked you to be on ours.
I think the students and the community won.
Yes, you're right. You're right.
The community won, and I think it's great. Thank you, everyone.
Great effort.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
At this time, I would like to have Mr. Himmelberger give us his presentation on the MCAS growth model, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start, I just wanted to follow up on, on what I thought was a terrific discussion on AP, because, um, we raised so many topics there that really speak to a lot of what we see as the issues in public education, both from, uh, the science and technology and engineering and math, the STEM initiative, to how to balance and give our high achieving students, um, enough rigor, uh, when a lot of our money, as Mr. Peterson mentioned, has to go by law to other populations within. So, we had a terrific discussion there, and I think that, um, because of, of, um, MCAS and because of, um, what this state has done, it has put Massachusetts, obviously, in a much better position than a lot of other places in the country. Having said that, we still have a pretty high bar to hit. And, um, I just think that that was a terrific discussion, and a big piece of it is what we are doing to study our curriculum and align our curriculum so that we make sure we have the proper precourses for all of our students who want to, uh, for instance, get into the sciences, so that we have enough rigor and enough depth and breadth of courses in the younger grades and in, in middle school especially, to get our students ready so when they get to the high school, they can achieve. This is brand new, hot off the press, uh, this growth model initiative from the ESE. And, um, along with what's happening at the, the national level, the, um, the Race to the Top initiative really, um, has the, um, the state of Massachusetts again out in front with, um, what this growth model represents. And basically, they are now able to measure student performance over time. And where, uh, MCAS only measures that one slice, that one, um, discipline for that one year, with this growth model now, we can have the ability to go back and look at how students have done in the past, and then compare students to their peer group, to their cohort throughout the state. And while it is not a perfect standalone measurement in conjunction with the other assessments that we're doing, I think it gives us a terrific amount of data. This was commissioned in the spring, and, um, they had nine pilot districts in the state that tested this out, and they went back into English and math, MCAS scores, um, and were able to then, uh, pilot this program and had some pretty amazing results. And now, we are ready to roll this out, uh, across the state. It was only released October 27th, so, uh, Mr. Trahan and I are still learning the ins and outs of what this represents. As we said, the MCAS shows relative to that one particular slice, whereas now, the growth model will allow us to look at an individual and how they change over time. And it will give us, um, a lot more data to be used in conjunction with the MCAS. It's interesting that you can look at achievement and say, well, we have high achievers or low achievers, but what about the growth? If you have low achievement, you can have high growth, meaning that the students are actually improving, maybe at a higher than average rate. Conversely, you can have high achievement where you're not seeing any growth at all. And, and so again, this will give us one more, uh, data point that we can look at. And what the, the mantra really has been is performance equals the achievement plus the growth. So, if we take those two data points together, um, and this is just what the state, I think, would like us to, to utilize the data for, um, identifying strengths and weaknesses, targeting the assistants, um, conducting the evaluations and making accountability decisions. For the initial rollout of this program, they're not using the data for anything except to identify districts or schools that are in distress, that are Level 4s, um, in terms of AYP. Um, I think ultimately, this data will be used, um, in some format. I think a lot depends upon how the federal government reauthorizes ESEA, if and when they get around to that. This student growth percentile, um, is a key piece of this. This SGP, you'll see and hear a lot of that as you go through the material, um, and, and all it is doing is looking at the rate of change, comparing it with that peer group. So that whatever percentile you fall into will give you your student growth percentile. They are expressing the rate of change as that percentile. Now here, they say if, if the student improves more than sixty-five percent of his peers, then he's in the sixty-fifth, sixty-fifth percentile. This is interesting. They take three students and have worked the math, so to speak, on this, and this student here, Gina, has taken, uh, in ELA, in grade five was at a 230, in grade six was also at a 230, which as you can see, still leaves her below, um, being proficient. And then, this would be representing from zero to 100, the growth of the, that particular score across the cohorts across the state. And just shows you where 230 would fall. So, as you can see here, in, in grade seven, Gina has again scored a 230. But now, we can see that, that 230 to 230 to 230 does not stand alone. We can now look back and say that this represents, this 230 represents that she did better than thirty-five percent of her peers, when you compare where she has been to the current score, which means that sixty-five percent of her peer group in this particular, uh, data did better than she did. So typically, between 40 and 60 percentile is the, the average range, so that Gina doing a 230 again puts her in a, a less than high achieving group. Again, what they're doing is they're just taking the percentiles from one to 99, and really in the middle, representing the 40 to 60 percent, here were the, the higher scores, and obviously, um, where the, the group did, uh, on the lower scores. Again, the growth percentiles between 40 to 60 are really where it's typical. Second student here, Harry, again, in this example, was a 248 and a 248, so he is scoring proficient. So, by other, the MCAS standards, where, where, uh, Harry is, is, is better than average. And again, you can see the plot where the percentiles would land the group as they go And again, they've broken it down here, that the twenty, the 244 looks like the median, 25 percent below, 75 percent, I'm sorry, the 244 comes across in the yellow with 25 percent being below and 75 percent being above. Ivy is at 214 and 214, again, almost to failing. And again, you can see the percentiles as they spread across from one to 99. And again, here in grade seven, she's at a 226, which, if you looked at that score as a raw score, 218 to 226 does not seem to be like much of a jump. But in this particular group that scored the 214, when Ivy does a 226, that puts her in the very top, um, eighth percentile. So, it, depending upon how you factor in the growth, here, the lowest score represents the highest growth. And again, as you see here, uh, Ivy, Gina, and Harry scores, and again, this is strictly for, for comparison. And then they'll add in the, the percentile of the growth. Here again, they're just, they're representing the data a little bit differently. But as you can see here now, the 230, which is the middle, middle score, for this particular group, she's only in the 35th student group percentile. And again, Harry, even though his score went down to 25, to 244, he would be in the 25th percentile, which means that 75 percent did better than that on the next comparison. And as you can see, the lower number in this particular case, the raw score represents actually the biggest improvement, the best growth by far. And again, this is just, um, taking us through, uh, what is typical versus the percentage and the percentiles. And what they say is it still falls between 40 and 60, and that for derivations of up to 10 percent, we really should not, uh, pay, give that too much weight. And, and as they say, they want to make sure we know that growth being distinctive and, and, um, distinct from the achievement, so the MCAS score is representing the achievement, would be one, one value, and then certainly looking at the growth, um, would give us another. In their example, a student that achieves at a low level can show a high rate of growth. This is important right here, because I think this is really the, speaks to the whole, um, mathematical statistical analysis here, and that is that, um, the student is compared only to the academic peers. So, you know, Gina's only being compared to the students that scored the 230. She's not being compared to, um, anyone in a different group. And they're also looking at this by subject, by grade, and by year, so as we go forward, the data will get that much more refined, as now we can test it across all of the different, uh, MCAS scores.
Can I interrupt you for one minute, Mr. Himmelberger? Mrs. Spitz has a question.
Sure. I have a question on growth.
Yep.
I know how important it is, um, because we do have to, to ensure that each of our students is growing within the organization. But at the same time, growth is not going to improve our AYP, because that student is still need, below proficiency.
For now.
For right now. But I'm just saying, that, that one that just scored 92 percent better than the people, the students within her group, is still non-proficient.
Correct.
So, even though she had a great growth pattern, she still is not helping AYP, because she is still failing.
For now, absolutely.
But she's helping herself, I think.
I think what the, what the DESE's goal is here, and what they saw in the pilot program with the nine districts, is you can now look at these students as a cohort, and you might find that in grade five, the students that were in Mrs. Jones's class showed high growth. The students that were in Mr. Smith's class showed low growth. And so now, you really start to be able to, to get into some pretty interesting data, um, which as we have seen, I mean, Mr. Trahan can attest to it, the amount of data that we are now required to capture at the state and federal level is mind-blowing. And so, before you know it, we're going to have, um, all of our student data matched up to all of our teacher data, matched up to all of our achievement data. So, the growth does give us one more slice. And I think ESE doesn't advertise this as the, the, uh, the final solution, but it's one more input into looking at, um, maybe giving districts a tool as to how they might improve the bottom line. In some of the pilot districts, they said that, um, they found that if they had a coach, a math coach, um, in the building, it improved that particular grade's scores dramatically. So then, they rolled it out to, to all of the other buildings for that grade. So it, it's a very interesting concept. I think it's still new. I mean, it's just a month old. So as we play with it, and as the ESE refines it and gets more data in there over time, I think it'll give us an awful lot of, um, of, uh, good ideas as to how to improve, uh, student outcomes and, and certainly to improve achievement.
Thank you.
Again, here, they're just talking about the median student growth percentile. Obviously, someone at the ESE is a music fan. Um, and so here, they're just saying that the point where half of the students have a higher growth percentile, and the other half would be the median. So, Mrs., uh, Mr. Student Crosby, um, is at the median point. This is where the, the mad scientists who invented this really have fun, because they now start to plot it on a scattergram. And you can really see, when you break this up into quartiles, you know, that you have your, your high achieving, high growth students over here, or districts, or schools, your high achieving, low growth in this quarter, low achieving, low growth here, and then low achieving but high growth on the, on the right-hand lower quartile. And so, again, I think the more MCAS tests that are scored over time, and the more students we get, we get far better data here, and we can really break this down by building, by district, by student, and will really, uh, I think, offer a lot of benefit. Again, here, they, they're looking at the 40 to 60, showing that the majority fall into that, that range. Again, here, they're just showing it one other way across on a, on a bar, um, looking at similar, um, slices of the students. So, I think, Mr. Spitz, your point is well-taken, that for now, they're not even going to use this as any part of the AYP, um, and really, the state's only using it to identify Level 4 schools right now. But there, there is talk that as they, as they reauthorize the law, they may tie it in to AYP as they get more data. Again, this is just showing how that you can map the growth across these distribution And again, we had talked about this, that, uh, the typical growth percentiles are in the middle, and, um, fewer than 10 points really probably doesn't have that much, uh, that we can draw from, as, from the results. Again, they're just giving the history here. As you can see, the nine pilot districts they used were pretty much of a cross-section. You had a charter school, you've got suburban, you've got high achieving districts, you've got, um, wealthier districts, districts that are in a, a tremendous amount of turmoil. So it's a real good, um, rollout there when they, um, when they tested this pilot. Again, here, it's just another example of, of taking all of the elementary schools in one district, and you can really start to plot i- in a fairly large district and get some meaningful information at the building level. This was one of the insights that, in one of the pilot, uh, districts, where they found that when they had implemented this new curriculum, it did pay dividends, and they could track it in terms of the growth. One, one of the pilot districts said that, uh, the median student percentile only grew at a 15th percentile from three to four, reconfiguring the schools to avoid the building transition in grade four might help. Full-time math coaches, we talked about, so, um, one implemented training on this growth for all of their principals. So, again, right now, it's just the four through eight ELA in math for the last two years. So, again, right now, it's just the 4 through 8 ELA in math for the last two years, and grade 10 only for '09. And I would imagine that we're going to see every subject, every year, as the data compiles. I can't imagine the server that they must use to hold on to all this data, but that's, you know, you probably have a couple of hundred thousand students across the state's data. The data was released to us on October 2nd, and then there was a public release of aggregate data. They're still doing workshops to help us better understand how to use this and to see what the plans are as we move forward. Again, then, there's some technical questions and growth data interpretations. I do have to say that I think ESE has moved in the right track here. I know they had maybe a somewhat other motivation, and that was to be able to include this in their Race to the Top application for that 4.3 billion, to be able to show that they are on the cutting edge of using assessment scores and finding other ways to use data to track and improve student outcomes. So that's just a brief overview. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Of this growth model. And if you have any other questions, I'll try and answer them. And I think that this is still work in progress, and we'll probably see a lot more information come out as we get into the next year, once they build another year's worth of scores and data.
Thank you, Mr. Himmelberger. I think we're getting closer to the measuring apples to apples and oranges to oranges. I still think we have a little bit of ways to go, but I think at least, let's, let us know, you know, it's not extreme. In that one case, someone was going to get a 280 overnight, but you can see growth, which is encouraging, and you kind of know the right things.
And I believe this gives what you've been after for the last couple of years, which is, how do we look at not just that one particular class? And so this really is going to give us a lot more information.
Well, I think it measures someone across the board and not against their sibling, which never made too much sense to me on it, but I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any comments or concerns? Being, thank you, Mr. Himmelberger, for that.
Thank you.
I think that goes along with also the information you gave us last time about the class from what, to each one, so we can look at that, and I hope it keeps going. All right. Going on, routine matters. I'm going to hold the minutes until next week. I have a few things to go over with, so I'm going to hold those. We do not have any other unfinished business to talk about. At this time, I will ask, ask the business manager if he wants to speak up or give anything to us. I know you have something in here.
Yeah. Excuse me. I did provide the committee with a written monthly financial update, as well as a brief memo. Just as a reminder for the committee, you know, my presentation of the numbers differs somewhat from what you've seen historically. And the total encumbrances, you know, do affect how the budget looks, but the money is still there. You know, it's not cash out the door. It's simply money that we know we're going to spend either on salaries or fixed expenses such as utilities and those sorts of things. I don't know if there are any specific questions on any of these areas. After the calendar year changes, we'll probably start talking about some budget transfers.
If I may, I'm going to speak, a couple of them, especially, we had one, other instructional materials, which are deep. Is there a reason that we anticipate being that far down, or?
I think there's been a couple of line items right in that area, between textbooks, other instructional materials, and general supplies, that have kind of been commingled in many ways. And I think that's where a lot of those issues are coming from.
And do you think we'll be fine in the new year? We'll be able to balance those out?
Yeah. Again, that's why I point to the fact that we'll, I'll start asking the committee for those budget transfers after the calendar rolls.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Just briefly, at the last meeting, we did talk about the shortfall the state was facing. As the committee may or may not be aware, the legislature did recess without granting the governor all of his requested authority to make some of those budget reductions. So that whole piece is still up in the air. While there were no direct local aid cuts, particularly for Oxford announced, where that goes, we still don't know.
Still in limbo.
Still in limbo, yes.
It's getting me numb. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Himmelberger?
Madam Chair, I just have one late-breaking item that I had to ask the committee's indulgence If you remember, the school building authority was created to allocate funds for, and control the building of renovations and new buildings throughout the Commonwealth. And that was set up as part of, under the treasurer's office in '07. And if you recall, back in the summer of '07, we had to take a vote to officially petition the SBA that we would be stating our interest in being in line for state money to help pay for what we think is probably a $5 million project at the middle school. And we voted this. The hoops that you jump through are tremendous, because we had to go to both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen to get both bodies to approve, basically, the statement of interest, which I had to reassure, the board was not committing us to anything. It was merely to keep our place in line. And so I was on a short schedule, because now they want the votes in by December 4th on this statement of interest, because we hadn't refreshed our statement of interest, their term, not mine. Because we hadn't refreshed our statement of interest last year, because they didn't ask for it, now they are. So the vote is merely resolved, having convened in an open meeting on Monday, November 23rd. The School Committee of Oxford, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated November 15th, 2009, for the Oxford Middle School, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which the District of Oxford may be invited to apply to the Mass School Building Authority in the future, described therein for each priority. And the reason why we qualified back in '07 was for the energy efficiencies and the upgrade that we did to the replacing of the boilers. Now we have Part 2 on the table, which is to replace the piping, the univentilators and the controls from that, as well as to replace all the windows and doors, the flooring, and to upgrade the HVAC system, the air handling system. So this statement of interest, the vote, is merely to express the statement of interest by the district for this particular project. And so I would ask if the committee would consider voting this evening.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
A second for discussion.
Mark? Ms. Peterson?
Okay, the previous one for the heating system, is that defunct now? This is new? Or is this inclusive of both projects that we're trying to get reimbursement for?
This is the exact same one that we submitted in '07.
Including the piping? That wasn't included in '07, was it?
Yes, it was. What, the interesting piece of this was, we went ahead and did the boilers because we felt we had to. SBA said that they would include that monies as part of the grant, and so we still can include that, even though we've already spent it. And we spent it without following all of the building committee, the municipal building committee, the owner's project manager, all of the hoops that we now are going to have to jump through. At the very least, this keeps it alive in terms of SBA, looking at the project.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Essentially, the same project.
If we have to replace the piping, et cetera, it would be the whole package that we'd be looking for some sort of reimbursement on at that point in time.
Correct. Correct. And it was the SBA that told us, when we went and visited them in spring of '08, they were the, the authority was the ones who suggested to replace the windows and doors for maximum heating efficiency and to improve the HVAC, which I think gives them the best bang for the buck when they spend the money, and it certainly, I think, gives the town the best outcome, because now, we will hopefully have a middle school that will last for another generation. And we wouldn't have to look at either any further renovations, or additions, or even a new building for the next 25 to 30 years.
Ms. Peterson?
I totally agree, in trying to keep the list alive. Is there any reality? Are they nearing any conclusion? Where are we on the list? Do you have any idea?
I believe that, assuming that we get a vote from the committee and the Board of Selectmen, and we still stay in the line to be approved, that we are still able to, and the town manager has been working with SBA as well, we are still, can still bring this before the town for the ultimate decision. And I think that's what we want to be able to do.
All right. I have a motion to reaffirm the statement of interest in a second. Can I call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes for yes, one absent. You have your reaffirm.
Thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Coonan?
I really don't have anything today, other than holiday wishes. Happy and safe holidays for everyone, and go Pirates!
Yeah, I know. Mr. Spitz?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Just a couple of quick ones. I did attend the conference. I'd like to thank you. We had a very enjoyable, hard-packed, fully-packed conference. Mr. Himmelberger was there for part of it, and he saw some of what we were attending. Just to allude to the, what the business manager said, the budget, they recessed without giving the governor any authority to do anything. But we were reminded two, three times, and I don't want to be a pessimist, because I'm hoping things start to turn around, but we were reminded that the schools have not taken any cuts. They've been fully funding what they consider fully funded. If it's, originally was 60 million, and they funded 29 million, they feel fully funded, even though it wasn't what they originally had projected to give to the schools, but the schools took no cuts supposedly. So they're warning that there could be cuts to the schools this time around in this budget. I had one other thing, and I can't remember what it was. Anyway, again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and good luck Pirates Thursday. It's always a tough day against Auburn, buddy.
We shall see. We shall see.
All right. That's it for tonight, I guess.
Okay. I just have a couple of things. I just want to say thank you to Student Council with the Turkey Run, and to their parents, because a lot of those donations, and it was a real great lesson learned. A lot of things, other than just books, to education. So that was great to see them. I think the kids really enjoyed it. And for everybody, that was, it was a wonderful thing to see. The other thing I have is, to the superintendent, any luck in getting the list of parent advisory board members? And if not, we could maybe ask those principals for those members?
Yes, I believe I do have Barton's, and I will reiterate that tomorrow's meeting.
That'd be great, if we could. And just a reminder, that we also would like to see those minutes as they go through. That'd be great. The other thing, if I can ask the superintendent if he would mention to his administrative council, is to perhaps deliver to the school committee by the first of the year, some type of proposal on the pros and cons of school choice. And if that is something we're looking at, what is their recommendation to this school committee on school choice? We did bring that up, but I think it'd be nice if by the first of the year, we could have some information. If they feel it is, and if they do, the number of students that they could handle in each grade, that wouldn't put a burden on our teaching and our students.
Would you be looking, Madam Chair, for that first meeting in January?
Probably January 11th.
Okay.
If we could have that information, so we could start the dialogue for the school committees. Looking forward to that. And that is all.
When do we have to vote on?
We have to do it by June.
By June. It's in May usually.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's great to have that information.
I agree.
And, right, and if it's something that we don't want to do, if we have time to think about it and talk, if it's something we do want to do, we also can let people know that we're thinking of it. So I have nothing else. At this time, I will open the floor.
Neil, you got anything?
Anything, anything, Joy. Not, I'll close the floor. Our next future meeting date is December 14th. I have no requests for executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, as for affirmative, one absent.